Call is being back into session. We just met in the executive session and out of that executive session came two motions. Nancy, could you give me the first motion, please?
Sure. The first motion regarding the ROARs matter is a motion to approve the terms of the settlement presented by council contingent on final written settlement approval by this commission.
Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Nancy, can you give us the second motion?
Sure. I move to retain DeSalo Levitt Gutsler LLC, D L G, to initiate opioid litigation against McKinsey and Company on behalf of the city in Fargo and for a contingency fee agreement to be approved.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Good, we'll start our regular meeting. I'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us. Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America and to the Republic where it sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our I suppose I don't have to roll call because we're already here already. We've already voted, so. Health. August is National Immunization Awareness Month to highlight the importance of vaccination for people of all ages. It is also an important reminder to catch up on routine visits and vaccinations that may have been disrupted with COVID-19 pandemic. Fargo-Cast Public Health will have to hold a back-to-school immunization clinics from 8:00 to 4:00, August 17th and 18th, where all recommended child and teen immunizations will be available. Library. Diverse Perspectives Book Club met in the main library on August 11th will meet on August 11th and featured title from Ashes, My Story, Being, Metta's, Homeless, and Finding My Way by Jesse Thistle. Beginning yoga sessions for adults are Thursday evenings through August at Carlson Library. Librarians are to attend the Native American Community Picnic, August 20th at M.B. Johnson Park. And the Ocean is a Possibility Summer Reading Challenge continues through August 20th. Now, you may wonder why we have all these policemen in the chambers today, but they just had graduation today. We are celebrating the graduation of 22 people compromising Class III of the Fargo Police Academy. After a challenging 12-week program, and I would not recommend commissioners do that program because you get tased, tear gas, and pepper spray in the face, and yet they're still smiling, so it's good to see. They successfully did their training and are very part of the accomplishments. We're going to give you a short video showcasing some of the behind-the-scenes academy scenes.
So our academy is a 12-week academy where we cover a wide variety of topics that are not only important to law enforcement officers but are focused really specifically for the Fargo police officer. Typically, when we're teaching our academy students, we're bringing them in in a classroom format, providing the material to them in a lecture-type format, and then introducing scenarios, real-life situations where they can apply what they've learned.
I think coming into it, it sounded overwhelming with everything that we were going to be learning, everything they expected of us, but just as we got through it, it was just getting more comfortable.
I was like super nervous about it. They really helped a lot with that, the instructors. They helped calm nerves, I think, through like everybody.
From like day one to where we're at now, when we're getting put into scenarios and stuff like that, and practicals to where things just kind of become second nature now.
It's a lot of classroom work. You know, we're in the classroom majority of the days.
I think I've sat in those chairs longer than I've ever remembered sitting in a college class.
We take like criminal law, traffic law, so we can all, our city ordinance, our state laws and all that stuff.
And I think one of the bigger things is how much they hammered like searches and seizures and amendments and how we apply those in case law and how we can do searches and when they're legal and when they're illegal. I think that was one of the bigger ones for me.
It's like driving fast but still safe. It's like precision driving. You can't hit the cones, otherwise you're going to get tired penalties.
Some of the stuff that we did, I initially thought like there's no way we could do that, and once we did it, I kind of realized like, wow, you could actually, like, these cars can handle quite a bit.
And it's what everyone wants to be when they're a cop is just drive fast and put on the sirens and lights and really pushing the cars and seeing what they can really handle is really cool.
From the first day, it was very tough. I was not ready for it, but now I'm kind of improving on it and I feel a lot better than I did. Definitely learned about being able to push myself to my limits as well.
At first, I didn't, I couldn't do push-ups, like 10 push-ups in a day. I didn't, I didn't know how to do those funny, those funny exercises, but now I can do 10 push-ups, 20 push-ups in one day. I don't get tired easily.
They come in handy a lot in case people want to be resisting. It helps keep officers safe if in case they have to go hands-on with somebody just because they're not compliant. It's a way to keep us safe and to be able to like execute our job appropriately.
Like I never did wrestling or anything. I did rugby, but defensive tactics, actually knowing, you know, the safest way to detain suspects even, you know, trying to keep ourselves safe, but also to, you know, use the right amount of physicalness to actually be able to detain them and detain them safely.
Before we even get into shooting, everyone's got to have a very strong understanding of all the firearm safety. They definitely drill that into our heads before we're even allowed to go into the shooting range.
Handling training firearms daily as soon as we get into class and then throughout the day, going over reloading drills, malfunction drills, all aspects of firearm safety and manipulation.
Fargo is a very diverse community and it's getting more diverse as the years go
on and as Fargo grows. So I really like that Fargo PD has an emphasis on diversity within their police department and also the community resources that they have. I'm really glad I learned about those resources that we have to offer the community and the services that we're able to provide through that.
Experiencing these different cultures is kind of something I look forward to as a police officer. You know, if you only speak English or if you only understand one culture, then you're not going to thrive here in Fargo.
The real big win for us is that we can steep these new recruits in our organizational culture, our vision, mission, values, teach them how to do things the Fargo way, and really get them embedded into the organization. So it's not just learning how to be a cop, it's learning how to be a Fargo cop, and I think that's a big difference from the rest of the state.
We start out the academy with very basic scenarios, and then as the academy progresses, we work our way towards some pretty advanced scenarios.
Everybody kind of comes in at different fitness levels as far as the PT stuff, but everybody's given 100% effort, everything they have, and it's just been phenomenal. It's made me even proud myself just to see how far some people have come.
I think the biggest takeaway for me, and this is a big one for me and the Fargo Police Department, was accountability. You make mistakes, you fail, and you learn from them, and that has been a lesson that I've learned a lot here.
Definitely a lot better at working through things that you didn't know you could handle. Starting out of the academy, I probably wouldn't think I'd be able to operate through that, but I got it done and was able to kind of push through and finish my task.
They've put us pretty much through everything we use here. I mean, we've been tased, pepper sprayed, tear gassed, shot with sim rounds. We've done pretty much all of it, and that's one of the biggest things we've learned is no matter what you face, you can fight through it.
This group has had an opportunity to be together for 12 weeks, not only learning our culture but kind of integrating themselves into our culture as a smaller team in the larger department.
Every day, all day long, been hanging out with each other. Couple of us have gotten together outside to, whether it be study or just chatting.
We're all laughing in the classroom, talking with each other about personal lives and kind of just building that family set in.
These individuals in my class, they are so funny. They are people, they are really nice people to be around.
They take you from not knowing anything about law enforcement to like up here, being
ready to be out there on the street, making the right decisions and choices, and it feels kind of great to have, you know, like that great support system.
We all got better together, and it was just awesome to see kind of everybody's knowledge, physical strength, defensive training, all that had just grown.
I've definitely enjoyed my time here, but it's, I'm definitely ready to, you know, get in a squad car with PTO and start actually, you know, working for the police department and helping people and being in that service, service role.
As graduates of the program, we have 15 who have signed up to be Fargo's newest police officers. They are in attendance tonight, and I have asked them to stand as I read their names and remain standing, please. Logan, Tanner, Brandon, Letitia, Drew, Elliot, Richard, Fotinos, Shelby, Johnny, Evan, Christopher, Dylan, Paul, and David. Let's give them a round of applause. We're not going to put you through a whole commission night, so I'll excuse you this time. If you'd like to exit left, thanks. Is there a motion to approve the Art of Agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 25th, 2022? So, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, Items 1 through 40?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. We have four speakers tonight. Tyrell Boxley of Food Carts.
As two weeks ago, I put the offer out for the Commissioners to come out at night. Still haven't been obliged by any of you guys, and no one is reaching out from Planning or from the city on our opinion on how we can better serve the city and with the new plans that you guys are coming up with privately without our input. Like for this past nearly year with the redevelopment that you guys are planning for nighttime and the noise ordinance and just, no one's just, I don't feel that our experience is being appropriately used or valued. So again, I issue the opening to come out after dark, come experience the nightlife and see what it is. Thank you.
Charles Taylor?
Before I start, Commissioner Strand, I would like to say thank you for the time that we were able to speak shortly earlier this week about, now almost six weeks ago, I ended the last time I spoke by saying I believe that you guys are misusing and unearned power. And now again, I stand before you after someone who I know personally, just like myself, has asked you, "Come see us." Two weeks ago, I said, "Come see us." For you to put these regulations on a market that you guys won't even take the time to come and see how it works really irks me the wrong way, and I've tried to come up here and be calm the last few times, but this time, I can't say I can continue to do that because we have done our part. We are trying to do our part and extend what we assume is an olive branch or some sort of line of communication. Like he said, there has been so many different channels of people talking, talking, talking before it ever gets to anyone downtown. We are the two people that at this moment are trying to speak for a multitude of people that are trying to make their living downtown, whether that be during the daytime or at night, it should not matter. Again, if you guys aren't going to let us know how, it's not that we are just trying to be downtown doing whatever we want and making quote-unquote "a nuisance" as we were tried to put under recently, that's not what we're trying to do. Like I've said before, we, like the people within our community, we enjoy interacting with the people within our community. You are also people within our community. Why is it that we never get to interact with you? Like I've said, we want to see you. We want to work together to make Fargo, like you say, far more, but if there are not channels for us to communicate, that isn't going to happen. Thank you for your time.
James Bircham?
My name is James Bircham. I'm a resident of the Downtown District, Fargo, at 1123 Third Avenue North, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the food trucks, food carts, and street performers. I know that there's been some recent motions addressing concerns about noise, location, safety, cleanliness, and that sort of thing, and operating hours. On the issue of noise, I'd like to say that I have not experienced any instances of overly loud music, and I can honestly say that allowing them to play music while operating creates an ambiance and a welcoming environment suitable for an urban setting and should be allowed. Having designated locations for vendors is a good idea, but these areas should make sense. And what I, what I mean by that is I don't think that we should remove them from the sidewalks near businesses, and I don't like the idea of having them grouped up in one Having them bunched takes away from an immersive vibe that you get when you're strolling downtown and you don't know who you're going to come across. I think that there should be a level of fluidity and freedom available to them when it comes to choosing a spot for the night. As far as the safety of the downtown area is concerned, personally, I've noticed a decrease in boots-on-the-ground police presence in the Broadway area, and obviously, we had the graduates today, which is great. Congratulations on that. I think that it's a good idea to have a more visible group of officers, boots-on-the-ground in the Broadway area. Well, I'm out of time. Thank you.
Chelsea Steffes?
Hello, and I also want to say thank you for your time. My name is Chelsea Steppes. I've lived in the Fargo Moorhead area for about seven years now, and I have only recently become aware of this issue when I was participating and attending community events, and I was getting to hear about this from local food vendors, like from Soul Taco and from Bomb Dog. That's when I got to hear about this and understand the issues that are going on. I've worked in downtown during the daytime for the last three years now, and I would like to encourage a more open discussion with the food vendors and the residents of downtown who are making it into a community. I do a large part of my time participating in community events, both in my free time and as my career, and I really love the presence of Fargo. The time that I've spent working and being here is what made Fargo change from a place where I'm just here temporary for school to a place where I could see spending the rest of my life. A large part of what makes me want to stay is our food scene and our food culture. Honestly, it's delicious. Honestly, I think we should be doing everything in our power to support the food and the local businesses that are creating it. I also find that the downtown scene, especially with our food trucks, creates a more welcoming, friendly, and safe environment. When I, as a 25-year-old young woman who is relatively unfit or unskilled in self-defense and walking downtown at night, I do feel safer knowing that across multiple parts of downtown, not just one corner, not just one area, I can find groups of people congregating around these friendly, lightly lit-up food booths where they can get a hot dog, maybe get a taco, or just find a place to stay. If I'm walking and I'm feeling uncomfortable on the street, I know that that's a place where I can go to find some safety, and I think that we should be supporting them, our local business, and what they're doing for our community. I wouldn't be here today if it weren't for the kind words of Soul Taco and Bomb Dog when I was speaking to them at the Med River Market to learn about these affairs, and I took the time to look it up myself, and I find that I do really support this. I think we should have open discussion with them and find ways that we can improve our community by working together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If the four speakers would leave their contact information with Kimber Anderson at the table there, we will set up a meeting in which we can have a discussion. I don't think many of the Commissioners stay up after midnight, so I don't know that they're going to visit you at your vendor's place. I could sign John Strand, but we'll set up a meeting either this week or next week and sit down and visit with you, okay? 42, Public Input Opportunity. Valley Edition 3900, 54th Street South. Approval recommended by Planning Commission 7522. Growth Plan Amendment to Lot 1, Block 7, Valley View Edition, from low-medium to medium-high density residential land use to commercial or high-density medium residential land use. Zoning change from an MR3 to a limited commercial with conditional overlay, and this is the first reading of the rezoning ordinance, and we have Donald Kress here again today. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm just waiting for a PowerPoint here for a second. There we go. Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Kress of the Department of Planning and Development. I'll be presenting the next two items. These items include ordinances prepared by the City Attorney's Office, which were included in your packet. As the mayor stated, Item 42A is the Valley View Edition. This includes a growth plan amendment and zone change. This is located here along 40th Avenue South, 51st Street. This is Independence Elementary School here, County Drain Number 27 here. These photos show the site. This was originally platted in 2013. It has never been developed. So here we're just on the corner. The elementary school's off to your right here, just looking across the property and looking along the street. Again, school's over here. This is the subject property here, just an open field. The first item here is the Growth Plan Amendment. This is the 2003 Southwest Future Land Use Plan, which applies to this property. The current growth plan designation here is low-to-medium or medium-to-high density residential. The applicant proposes to change that to commercial or medium-high density residential. This would allow the zoning of limited commercial to be applied to this property, but since there is also that residential component, if there's ever a future mixed-use project that the applicant would like to develop, that would enable that to happen as well. As noted in the staff report, a public open house as required by the Land Development Code was held as part of the review process for this Growth Plan Amendment. The zoning, current zoning here is MR3, multi-dwelling residential, and the proposed zoning, as we talked about, is LC, limited commercial. The applicant is with us this evening, and if you have questions about what he plans to develop there, he would be able to talk about those proposed developments. The conditional, limited commercial zoning also includes a conditional overlay. Commissioners are familiar with this. We, this provides site design standards for the site as well as future buildings and limits some uses. This is a limited, or a commercial, or conditional overlay that we typically have along arterial streets, and you've seen quite a few of these in the last few years here. It's appropriate for use in this area as it is along an arterial street yet close to multi-dwelling and single-dwelling residential. This was just a slide here. So it's the variety of zoning here along 40th Avenue South, limited commercial, multi-dwelling, single-dwelling, multi-dwelling, multi-dwelling, limited commercial, general commercial, and public and institutional for the school there. The recommended motion is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. The project representative, Brian Kanowski of Epic, is with us this evening, and they wish to address the commission. I just did want to have one note for you, Commissioners, that this project has evolved since it was originally applied for. Today, you're looking at a Growth Plan Amendment and Zone Change. In a few weeks, you'll see on your Consent Agenda a plat of this property, which will just divide the property into two lots, an east lot and a west lot. That'll just, it's a minor plat, it'll be on your Consent Agenda, so if you see that and you think, gee, this looks familiar, that's why. So it's on the same property. This zoning will apply to the plat, though, because this has been done first. So that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this rezoning? Anyone present who wishes to speak? Not, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item B, Urban Plains by Brant Sixth Edition. Approval recommended by Planning Commission 6722. A zoning change from multi-dwelling residential with conditional overlay to limited commercial with conditional overlay. First reading of the rezoning ordinance and a plat of the Urban Plains by Brant Sixth Edition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Urban Plains by Brant Sixth Edition, located here along 51st Street South. This is the Shields Arena, 32nd Avenue South, Veterans Boulevard over here. Photos show the site here, again, an undeveloped property originally platted in its current configuration in 2013. That was part of the original Urban Plains plating in 2006. 51st Street here, again, this street looks a little different than those you see in the more suburban areas, having the diagonal parking, wider street with diagonal parking, more similar to a downtown configuration. And this is, again, facing across the property, this is Urban Plains Park over here and again, 51st Street. The existing zoning is MR3, multi-dwelling residential. The proposed zoning is limited commercial, again, with a conditional overlay. Here are just a couple more photographs of the site itself. Going to cross it here. The conditional overlay is slightly different than the conditional overlay on the previous project because this one is more focused on the relationship of the development with that distinctly configured 51st Street. There are two conditional overlays in your packet. The one you're voting on is the clean copy. The other one was included for, was included in what the Planning Commission got, really for your reference, but you're voting on the last one. The plat divides the property into two lots, this north and south here. These lots will take access from the avenues. They will not have a direct vehicular access off of 51st Street. The applicant, Tim Gleason of Enclave Development, is with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. The Planning Commission's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this rezoning? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks. Item C, Special Assessments for Maintenance of the Skyway System. Steve Sprague to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is our annual assessment for the Skyway System maintenance. It covers the heating, cooling, cleaning, and security costs, and it's, we've kept that dollar amount the same as we've had in the past years. I haven't heard back from any of the affected property owners.
Any questions with the commission? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
We do have a public hearing.
Oh, sorry. Anyone public who wishes to speak to special assessments on Skyways? Anybody wishing to speak? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Now do I have a motion?
So moved again.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item D, Special Assessment for Nuisance Abatement Fees. Steve Sprague to explain.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So with our nuisance abatement, we are covering snow removal, lawn removal, or lawn mowing, Dutch elm disease removal, and we have a one- and a five-year program on that. We have an encroachment in there and code enforcement. Under the code enforcement, there were seven buildings that were removed. The code enforcement total is $169,000. The mowing is from last summer, from 2022.
Uh the mowing is from last summer, from twenty-twenty-two, or excuse me, twenty-twenty-one. We have a total of about seven thousand dollars there. Um the encroachment um was a, a, it, it made a dangerous situation for uh our residents. And so the city assisted the uh property owner in um removing the encroachment or uh remediating it. Um there's a total cost of seventy-six thousand dollars that they're being assessed for that. Um the Dutch elm, we have uh six properties on the five-year at a twenty-one thousand dollar cost. And one, uh on the one year, there's a fifteen thousand dollar uh assessment. And then in the snow removal, which was from the, the winter that we just completed, uh there's a twenty-seven thousand dollar cost there. Uh some of these costs have been paid as people got their notices that we were going to do this. Um and then there was um conversation with one property owner uh regarding the snow removal, and they, it's possible that they might be here.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the nuisance abatement fees? Anyone present who wishes to speak? I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item forty-three, Fargo-Moorhead Area Flood Diversion Project Update. Joel Paulson to explain. He's got a big night tonight because tomorrow we're to start a groundbreaking on the ditch.
That's right, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioners, uh for some time tonight. I have a number of items I'd just like to bring to your attention uh for your information. Uh the mayor mentioned tomorrow is our groundbreaking for the diversion channel. Uh that is a one-point-five-billion-dollar contract in today's dollars, encompasses thirty years of operation and maintenance. And so this is really taken us over a decade to get to this point. Um so I hope you all can make it out there tomorrow. It's going to be a great event. Uh we have uh the senators from Minnesota and North Dakota, uh as well as Governor Burgum and a number of uh corps and uh folks from Washington DC from the Assistant Secretary of the Army's office. So should be a great celebration to uh, to just acknowledge all the hard work uh for everybody just to get to this point. Obviously, we have a lot of work ahead of us as we uh start construction over the course of the next five to six years, uh ultimately looking towards that twenty-twenty-seven date for permanent flood protection for the Fargo-Moorhead community. Uh I would like to talk about a few um changes coming up with the authority. Um I have been working with the Diversion Authority Board um to basically move into a transitionary period where we're focusing on implementation versus project development. And with that, uh some structural changes have been discussed concerning the committees uh in the board makeup. And uh just wanted to preview this in front of uh City of Fargo, since you guys are a member entity to the JPA. Uh currently, we have four subcommittees under the Diversion Authority. We have the Public Outreach, the Finance, uh the Lands Committee and the Agricultural Committee. Uh the proposal right now with the Diversion Board uh that we're considering is uh to dissolve the Agricultural Committee. Uh it has not met for many years. Uh we have done a lot of work on the agricultural front uh with prevent plant policies and crop insurance uh on top of pro, uh producers' policies. Uh and we just, we haven't met for a number of years. And so uh just from an item of efficiency, uh we are um going to be proposing dissolving the Agricultural Committee. The other committee I'd like to talk to you about is the Public Outreach Committee, and uh Mr. Strand, you are on that committee. Uh we have also been talking about this change from project development to implementation. And uh we're really more into a, a role of interacting with nearby property owners. Um it's very different than during the project development phase. And so we, we are anticipating uh dissolving the Public Outreach and moving those duties over to a new committee called the Planning Committee. Um and so we're really not changing uh a lot of what Public Outreach does, but we are uh concentrating that with a number of other duties into a, a proposed planning committee. Um and so with this, we will be asking the City of Fargo to appoint uh members to the Planning Committee. Uh and then also, as we move to dissolve the Public Outreach and the Agricultural Committee, um those folks will uh, will no longer be uh needed on those subcommittees, so. Uh that's all I really had, Mayor. I just wanted to preview the structural change because it is, it is uh um, you know, a, a big overhaul. Uh but it's also preparing us to be more efficient in the implementation phase and be more nimble uh with the resources that we have. So certainly available for any questions that the commission might have.
Any questions, any Commissioners? Mr. Strand?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Uh Joel, when's the deadline? When, when's the drop dead, dead date? When are we protected fully?
That's a great question, Commissioner Strand. Uh so right now, the schedule is to have permanent flood protection in preparation for a potential flood event in twenty-twenty-seven, the spring of twenty-twenty-seven. Now, the, the project won't be complete by twenty-twenty-seven, but structurally, it will be in place to um hopefully prevent uh any sort of potential flooding that we might see. Uh the second question I get on top of that, Commissioner, is when will flood insurance policies no longer be needed within the City of Fargo? Um we anticipate approximately two years after that twenty-twenty-seven date. Um by the time we work through our letter of map revision and have new floodplain maps available uh that will effectively remove the floodplain from the urban area uh within Fargo uh and provide residents with that option to not carry mandatory flood insurance if they have a, a, a mortgage. Um and so we're looking at around twenty-twenty-nine to twenty-thirty-four uh for that milestone.
Any other questions or discussions?
I have a comment. I'm, you know, I'm certainly, I, I've been learning as much as I can about this, um and I have a lot more to learn, but what's apparent is the vision innovation and the impact to the community um that was really the vision of leaders for several years now and continues to be in Fargo's model of financing and structure really has become a model and an example across the country. So I just wanted to commend you for your work and to all the people before me who made this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joel. See you tomorrow.
Thank you.
COVID-nineteen update. Desi Fleming and Dr. Tracy Newman.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh Commissioner Strand had requested that we do a COVID update, so we're going to do that tonight. I did um ask Dr. Newman if she would put in a few slides on monkeypox just because that's kind of an extra bonus for you. But um, so I will, when she's done, I will um just give you an update on where we're at with response duties with the Health Department, and then if you have any questions after her presentation, so.
Sounds good, because you probably would have got a question about it anyway, so.
I suppose. Yeah, I took the liberty of just adding a few. It's another outbreak that we're um, we're following. So uh Mayor Commissioners, thank you for having us tonight. We were asked to provide, as Desi said, a COVID-nineteen update, so we will do that. Um I just want to start by saying we're in a pretty good place. Um the WHO just released some data that new COVID cases worldwide are down about nine percent and deaths are holding pretty steady. Um but we do know that cases are being um significantly underestimated and underreported due to testing and things, people testing at home and things like this. Um so that makes our role in public health a little challenging to um spot concerning trends or even identify new concerning variants. But I will update the data that we do have for you tonight. Um so just to review briefly so you understand um what our community risk levels are, the CDC looks, puts every, puts a community risk level on every county, and that's based on um the levels. Um it's determined by percentage of hospital bed use, so that's inpatient-staffed beds that are occupied by COVID patients. Uh it also factors in hospital admissions, so that's new hospital admissions for people with COVID. And then it takes into account your total number of new COVID-nineteen cases in your area. The levels can be defined as either low, medium or high. And we really use these levels to help us communicate or help us in the community decide what prevention steps we should be taking, either as an individual or as a public health uh entity. So this is just a vigil of that. You can appreciate low is green. Um if your community's in the low level, you know, we really just recommend get tested if you're not feeling well, and we encourage everyone to stay up to date on their COVID-nineteen vaccines. If you're medium, uh we really encourage people to assess their own personal risk. Um if you are someone who is at high risk for developing severe disease or complications, perhaps you live with someone, you might want to take extra precautions for your health, such as wearing a mask. Um and then you can see when you get into the high risk, uh we encourage everyone to wear a mask, especially in indoor, poorly ventilated, congregate settings. Um so just the grand view nationwide, this was as of last Thursday. It was the most recent data. Um you can appreciate a fairly many number of counties in our country are either in medium or high risk. Um when you look at the numbers of percentages of people who live in these places, it's about eighty-four percent of our population in the United States is currently in a medium or high level. Uh Cass County in particular continues to be in the medium risk level. So again, um we, we encourage our residents individually to assess their own risk, uh take precautions as needed, and certainly you could talk to your healthcare provider as well, stay up to date with vaccines and get tested if you're symptomatic. Um these are things that we do at the community level when we're in the yellow or medium risk. I probably won't read these all to you, but they're there for you. We look at um protecting, screening. Um we look at high-risk areas such as congregate facilities, homeless shelters. Um it's, we, we implement different things depending on the level that we're in. And then how are we doing for vaccines? Uh I pulled numbers for people who've had at least one dose. For the total residents in our state, uh now that includes everyone down to the age of six months, we're sitting at about almost fifty-five percent. In Cass County, we're at sixty-three percent. Uh importantly, in Cass County, our really vulnerable population of sixty-five and older is doing quite well. Eighty-three percent of those people have had at least one dose of vaccine. Um and then just to highlight, our newest population that's now eligible for this vaccine, which is the children under the age of five, um not doing so great. North Dakota's three percent total, doing a little better, and Cass County approaching seven percent. To be fair, this is only newly available, so we're hoping to see those numbers uh increase as time goes on. And then our next lowest age group uh is the five-to-eleven-year-olds or those younger school-age groups, and you can see the numbers provided there. And then briefly, just to touch on, you know, the most prominent uh COVID nineteen variant we're seeing now is the BA five variant of the Omicron. Um I think it made up close to eighty-six percent of cases in the United States last week. It certainly is the most common we're seeing statewide here in North Dakota, um and it's gaining traction in many other countries as well. This variant was first discovered in early twenty-twenty-two. Uh it came out of South Africa, and it really got scientists and researchers' attention because um it specifically has mutations on the spike protein, which is what our current vaccines uh target. Um so because of this, it's become much more contagious. Uh while more data is needed, we're not necessarily seeing increased severity or huge spikes of hospitalization and death, but we certainly are seeing more cases. Um there is an upswing of hospitalizations and severe illness in people who are high-risk or the most vulnerable. And then vaccines continue to prevent severe illness and death. That is our number one um tool for protection. So these are ways we can all protect ourselves currently, being in the medium risk level. Probably nothing you all have not heard us say for the past two and a half years, but stay up to date on your vaccines. Please stay home if you're not feeling well. We encourage people to test um just for their own safety and to prevent spread in our community. There are home tests available at a variety of locations, including Fargo-Cass Public Health, um free of charge. We encourage you to wear a mask if you have symptoms or if you think you're at high risk. Uh wash your hands well and often and try to avoid poorly ventilated spaces and crowds. Okay, briefly to touch on monkeypox. Um as you all have, I'm sure, heard and been aware, this was recen, recently declared a global health emergency, uh which is not something done lightly. That's a pretty rare designation in public health. Um it really means that the outbreak is a significant threat to us worldwide and that coordinated international response is going to be needed. The last time the World Health Organization made this designation was actually in twenty-twenty-four, the COVID-nineteen outbreak. Um Europe is currently being considered the epicenter of outbreak. However, this last week, um the United States actually had the highest number of new cases being reported of anywhere in the world. Um currently, we know about ninety-nine percent of cases are in men. Um in particularly, about ninety-eight percent of those are men who have sex with men. Um but we are slowly starting to see spillover into the community, and it's important that, to realize anyone can get monkeypox, and this is why we want to try and contain this. Um it is thought that the gor, global risk is moderate. Um the threat is considered to be high in places like Europe. Uh and currently, it's not expected this will disrupt things like international trade or international travel. Uh here in home, we actually, uh we just found out today, we've had a second case. But when I made these slides, we had had one case. Uh we officially have two cases of monkeypox in North Dakota. Uh both have been residents in uh the eastern part of the state. They, it is believed they were likely acquired while traveling out of state. Um but it, the risk is still thought to be low in North Dakota, but we are starting to see our first cases. Uh most of these cases have been clinically mild, thankfully, and not requiring hospitalization. Uh North Dakota is receiving a small amount of monkeypox vaccine, which I believe Desi will update you a little bit. We at Fargo-Cass did receive, we are one of two places in the state um to receive initial allotment of twenty doses. Um and we've already used those and have a waiting list, but we are expecting more and more doses to come potentially as soon as this week. Um and then I just wanted to briefly, again, touch on that um it's not only a men who have sex that men. We've had um our first pediatric cases in the United States. One was a toddler in California. One was an infant in DC. Um both of these were thought to be household transmission. Both were otherwise healthy children uh without any risk factors. Um so, and there's also been the first case of monkeypox in a pregnant woman in our country as well. And then as of last Thursday, the Biden administration declared monkeypox a, a public health emergency in the United States. Uh again, that's a pretty rare thing, I would say, in the past decade. Um our federal government has only done that for things like the Zika outbreak. I believe they did it for the opioid crisis and of course for COVID-nineteen. Um but this is really helpful. It helps freeze, uh free up funds for us and resources. It will help expedite the process of getting vaccines and treatments to us here locally more quickly. Uh it also allows for much more effective data tracking uh from local jurisdictions. Uh and as I stated previously, the US has had more infections than any other country as of late. And I'll head to, turn it over to Desi.
Yeah, so just um, of course, our pandemic response activities have changed significantly. So we do still um do the test distribution, so that's out of the, the PD substation that used to hook onto us. That's where um you can go if you want the home test kits. They're also available throughout the community and are free. Um we also continue to support the testing site on Twenty-Fifth Street, although that is run by the State Health Department, but we do help them with um getting supplies. But they handle the daily logistics of that. Um obviously, we continue our VaxUp messaging campaign with help from the Communications Department and the city. Um we have COVID vaccines through our clinic and also outreach. We're also working really hard right now to increase immunizations in general since our immunization rates have decreased a little bit overall. Um continue to monitor data, and then we try to adjust as we can. The state obviously has gone down to weekly data um updates, so it's a little more challenging for us to know the true status, but we try to keep in touch with the health systems and know what's going on locally. Um monitoring fiscal grants is, I think, a full-time job for Melissa and all the different funding sources that we've had, trying to figure that out. So we still have some, we've spent out a couple of the grants, but still have a, a couple remaining. And obviously, providing community guidance and school guidance will be upcoming here with, with the school year, but. And as far as monkeypox, we were one of the first agencies to get the vaccine. There will now be um more providers in the community that will have access to that as well, but we are working closely with other providers to pri, provide that network of, you know, if it needs to be given within a certain time, you know, that there's a place available to do that within our community. So that's kind of where we're at um staff-wise. Um we kind of just remain, the, the state is kind of taking the lead with, with messaging for the monkeypox. Um so we're kind of following their lead at this time, but we may branch off if we need to do more specific targeted messaging.
Excellent report. Mr. Strand, any questions?
Uh I, only one question that I think I've heard anecdotally, and maybe you could confirm, but is the monkeypox vaccine the same vaccine as smallpox?
Yeah, it's a good question. It's kind of confusing. It is. Uh it was intended originally for smallpox. The, the two viruses are in the same family and very similar um in their virology. And so they're actually taking them out of, the United States and many other countries had smallpox vaccines in stockpile um were there ever to be a threat or uh a need for that if there was some sort of act of terrorism or bio-warfare or something. Um but it turns out they're useful for an epidemic of monkeypox as well.
And lastly, what's the shelf life of a smallpox vaccine? If somebody's had the vaccine in, into, into their body, does it last forever or?
No, um currently, it's a two-dose series that you receive. No. Currently, it's a two-dose series that you receive twenty-eight days apart to be considered fully immune, and then booster doses for high-risk people. And I don't know how it will come out for monkeypox, but currently, it's that you get a booster every two years. That would be for people who work in, like, laboratories or who are exposed to this continually. I don't think they've come out with official recommendations.
And I will say also, this isn't, you know, back probably in the nineties, there was a spattering of people that got the actual smallpox vaccine that was kind of pricked into the shoulder. That isn't the same as this formulation. So this is kind of a newer formulation of that same family of virus. So they're the the new one they found has a little bit less risk factors to it, so that's why they want to go with that newer vaccine. So you probably are referring to the vaccine that a lot of us got as children.
Your work does not end, does it?
I can see people really excited to have another public health emergency, but.
Mayor, I think we need gold stars to put on the foreheads of everybody in our public health department and sector.
Thank you.
Be careful what that would be, sign of little angels or whatever. Say, Dr. Newman, I had just had a question. I know sometimes people contact COVID, aren't quite sure how they'll get through it, whether it's going to be a severe case or not a severe case. And I had heard of antiviral medication, where at first was for chronic illness or other issues. I've heard now that they have more of it. It's lightened up a bit, and you can go in and request it even if you're under sixty or forty or thirty?
Yeah, I do think the supply is better across our whole state, actually, not just here in Fargo. So I encourage you, if you are seeking that for any reason, just to reach out to your personal healthcare provider, and they could advise you.
I think it does depend on where you go, because I do think people still do get turned down if they don't have the higher risk factors. But it's always good to reach out to your provider and just see where you're at and what you could do.
I know there's a variability in town, but I just wanted to say that is out there. People want to do that. It might help lessen the disease. But great report. Thanks. Any other discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, to the biggest item on the agenda, which I'm so glad we finally got to, is recommendation to approve the mayor's 2023 budget. I presented the 2023 preliminary budget to the commission on Thursday, June twenty-eighth, with my recommendations for budget and mill levy. Please continue to send any questions or requests you have, and I'll meet with the city's budget team to honor those requests or ideas that you have. Tonight, the commission is asked to approve the 2023 preliminary budget and mill levy and schedule a public hearing for Tuesday, September sixth, 2022, at 5:15 PM. I would request that that suggested motion be moved.
So moved.
I'll second. Discussion. May I ask your call back?
Yes, I was just going to make reinforce the fact that it's the preliminary budget, and I really encourage the public to participate in the hearing and ask questions of the Commissioners and the Mayor. I do know that one of the one of the issues still remaining on the table is the final approval of some of the benefits, including final contracting on health insurance. And there is some latitude there to consider what kind of treatments will be available within a range of available funding. So as that negotiation happens, we'll continue to monitor that and make sure that in the end, it's the best benefit we can have for the city employees.
Any other discussion? Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this it's somewhat abbreviated what we've been given. So some of the questions I have, I don't know yet to ask them because I don't know what's all included in some of your budget line items, you know what I mean? But but I I have one overarching question. What's our what's your thoughts as we you prepared this budget for the contingencies for for continued escalation of benefits and wages in our working sector? How much leeway do we have if that trend keeps working against us and we're behind the curve in keeping and hiring and retraining and keeping our people?
Well, John, that's a challenge, because if you look at the budget and try to do normal, if we stick a COLA three-point-five is something we're going to try to give our employees on an every-year basis, you are almost guaranteed that your budget is going to jump four million every year, four to five million every year. And you would hope that would come with growth and other types of taxable revenue that comes to the city. But of course, if it doesn't, then you do mill levy or go into our reserve fund. So my concern is, yeah, if inflation continues at a nine percent rate, that is going to be difficult to keep up with that. And I think you saw the national report recently, which said the inflationary wage is about four and a half right now with the inflation running nine percent. And that is going to be difficulty for a lot of Americans and a lot of our wage earners in our city. So we all we take it very seriously, and that's why we did a market survey to increase the market pay. We've done a PCC evaluation of everybody's job, and then we added the three-point-five COLA. So some people might be receiving four, five, or six percent on those types of changes. A step in the city of Fargo runs two to five percent. So you might get a five percent step plus a three and a half percent COLA. That pops you up eight and a half percent. So it's taken that, and I don't know if Jill's here tonight, but the HR group has worked very hard to take all those things into account at this time. We think we're being reasonable at this time. Sanford did a three-point-five percent change. The county did a four percent, but they didn't take all the market surveys into account. We are a little abbreviated on the budget that you received, and I know many of you would kind of wonder about that. What you don't have is the each department head will put in a dialogue, and that would kind of explain this went up, this went down. Ben Dow might put in their fuel went up, so here's what this happened here. Or Fire might say we're buying another trucker, doing these different things. That will be inserted over the next month, and we'll get that to you as soon as we can get to you. Budget team is a little different. Terry's kind of working through this. They did a Woben's job to get through this, because Ken Costin was kind of the guy that knew it all. But we're putting it back together and should by the time of the public meeting have it ready for in a form you're more used to seeing. So we'll have that for you. But I would encourage any one of you who have questions, each department, sit down with the budget team, and we'd be happy to go through that with you. Mike's worked very hard on it. He knows it frontwards and backwards. He can explain anything that you want to explain as well.
If I might continue, you know, we've kind of made created and influenced some of our own challenges, for example, with the diversion. We have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of jobs going out into the sector that wouldn't have before, so there's competition that didn't exist before. I'm just still very concerned that when if we get down the path, we're prepared to be nimble if we find out that we're hemorrhaging workers and that they're leaving our workforce to go work for competitors or for other governments or other, you know, I just is as nimble as we can conceivably be going forward and be prepared to act on a moment's notice if our departments start alerting us that that it isn't adequate and that they're losing people and they can't keep people or can't hire them. Because those and it's not just Fargo.
No.
Everybody. And and the other side of this teeter-totter is, so the public knows, your taxes are going to go up if we're going to sustain the support levels that you're used to in a growing city. We have growing challenges, growing populations, growing needs, and it's not free.
We're going to do fire station number eight. We're going to have to add twelve firemen. So I mean, we are changing those things. Ben Dow had some issues with some of his workers, and we changed the rate of pay with almost within a month. We changed that. I'll ask you, as Commissioners, to be nimble, because if we have to do that, we'll address that. And we're very much aware of that now. What we're going to do is continue a market study on a yearly basis. We're not going to wait three years. So we're going to continue to do a market study this next year and continue to follow that very closely. So we will continue to do that. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpak? Aye. Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes.
I do have one announcement I think I need to tell you about, is that we did get a federal grant of 1.5 million on Twelfth Avenue Bridge. So we are going to look at Twelfth Avenue Bridge. The federal government will help us study that and to have type of solution. For those who you don't know, that was a private bridge that was built many years ago. And every time we have a flood event, it floods. It's not usable. And we don't have, in my mind, enough resiliency, enough bridges open when we're at thirty-seven feet of water through the city. So the Twelfth Avenue Bridge may be a nice solution to that, and we are going to try to pursue some federal money to have that happen. But this is the first step. So if you see anybody from congressional delegation tomorrow, say thank you very much for giving us that. And I know it's dear and dear Dave to the Northsiders to have another access across the north side of town. Any other discussion?
Just a reminder to us on the commission, I didn't notice till today that our agenda, it's a new item, the liaison commission updates, as a regular item at the end of our agenda, because I was prepared to give some updates, but it isn't on our agenda. But just a reminder going forward.
Is it okay to delay till next session?
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Anything else for the good of the order?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Call back.
Yes, thank you. I just want to, I know that we congratulated the new class of the Police Academy. The ceremony this morning was very meaningful and thoughtful, and I want to thank the communication teams for team for all of the work also that they did to put that together.
Yes, it was. Is there a motion adjourned? So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Call those in favor, say aye.
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 We're adjourned.